Yeah, I'll take Mike for you the third time. I whispered that to you while you were over here.
Play allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the law which stands on foundation under God, in his soul, in his heart, in his heart. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the sick handicapped departed in the military personality committee. Thank you. Full company.
Hi, Tom.
Here.
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 Betty Corwin, here.
Tom McNerwood.
Here.
Brett.
Here.
Ward Collins.
Chad King.
Here.
Andrew Stein.
Here.
Daniel.
Before we get to the comments on the floor, we have a special guest. I'd like to welcome our state representative, Jason.
Thank you. I am not Eddie Mann, and I am not here for Publishers Clearinghouse to deliver checks, but I do have checks today. I'm very grateful, thank you first and foremost for applying for GEDF this year. I know we had some luck in the past. We had a year off where GEDF really didn't get processed, but this year it was a little bit late, and I know I was pushing everyone to apply and get out there in Bridgeville in about $1.4 million worth of projects. I was able to fund one project entirely, which is the McLaughlin Road project for $100,000, and then the second project, which was McLaughlin Run, which I believe was a $500,000 project, was able to fund that at $250,000. So, very grateful, very happy. A lot of hard work goes into the grant applications, the entire process, the application on my part. I'm just happy I can help out Bridgeville any chance I get. I do know the applications will be opening again early in the year, hopefully in February. I want to urge you to apply again. I'm hoping that I can help out with another $100,000 to $200,000 to help with the other projects. I know it's not going to solve every problem. The Bridgeville has flooding lives, but every little bit helps. There will be some other grant applications available, and I hope to have that to counsel by, I'd say, the week after New Year's, if not before. I've been working on a few other things as well, but definitely some other areas where you can apply that will help with the flooding concerns here. I know I was here a couple of years ago. I really want to make sure that we did something, so I'm very grateful, again, for the support, for the application, and happy to be providing over $300,000 to $400,000 today. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Jason, he contacted us monthly, weekly, status updates, his folder is known. He was integral in getting this money for us, so I really appreciate everything you've been doing for us.
Absolutely, and hopefully more's on the way. Anyone else?
There you go.
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate your help. Hey, that's a lot to watch. Thank you, Jason. Thank you all. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. You're our visitor, but I should have brought them all over there. Thank you. The floor is all yours. You're the only visitor. Thank you.
Excuse me. I think I've been talking to Exeter Chief Circuit, Mike Collins from the Parking Authority. I mentioned that I'm really concerned about that section of, when the front line is, that section of Washington Avenue and Station Street where the Arch of Building is. The people that bought the Arch of Building purchased part of the area, the yardlot, the abandoned borough spur line once. And this other area, excuse me, this triangle area here, that's the dream of property. I was going to say, this drawing, I showed you this before without the red lines, I think, but this drawing was made by the Bridgeville Parking Authority company. But what I wanted to point out, Mike said that he had contacted an engineer, I'm assuming it was Ken, was that your firm? Were you doing some work for the Parking Authority?
Yeah.
Okay. We had looked at another parking lot, not that one. Oh, not this one? Okay. Well, anyway, what I wanted to point out to you, if you, I mentioned I talked to Lori briefly about my concern. The people who own the Arch of Building, I think, pay $160,000 or $70,000 just for that strip. And Lori had mentioned to me that she didn't think it was going to be for a building. I'm really concerned about the fact that if the building is placed there, that it will wipe out the potential parking needs of the community beyond, that this piece of land, the only vacant piece of land in central business district, all right? And anyway, I can't remember if I mentioned this to you last month, but I suggested because it was a similar piece of property that the Parking Authority was having a problem with, that was that vacant lot right across the street from the post office. A doctor was, he was going to put a four-story building in there requiring 40 parking spaces, which, again, would totally overwhelm the number of spots in those lots. By the way, Mike mentioned this to me the other day, it sort of shocked me. For example, he said, "The biggest parking lot in town, which is right next to the Mandela Bean and that area, and also the other parking lot next to where the old PNC Bank used to be, that I think there's 80 and 30 spaces, half of them are already occupied by the people that live in the area," which means of the parking spaces that are in our parking lots, only half of them are available to potential consumers that we want to come here to shop. And I was going to say, I would, Mike mentioned one other thing that's important, Ken, if you ever get a chance to look at this stuff, but this drawing made by the Parking Authority was quite good. However, there's an important feature on it that I think should be made. This is the first Commonwealth back right here. I think that this alley that goes from the largest shop to the largest parking lot in town should be extended down to this point, because that would mean that, incidentally, maybe road, let's not say road, Station Street, the second most important road to the, to the central business district in the community. And if by putting this road, which is dirt throughout from here to let those people get to our biggest parking lot, they wouldn't have to go up here, hang a left, hang a left again. It would be much more inviting. And if by some miracle, the two-way couple is ever built, this would be one way, it would be a direct route to that area. But I just wanted to, as I mentioned to you, because of the problem with the vacant lot across from the parking lot, part of the post office in this one, I think I suggested that you guys eliminate that ordinance in the community that says anybody that builds a building with central business district, and maybe it's any business district, doesn't have to provide parking. I think it's a bad idea. You should make an effort to rescind that law, or that ordinance. And I'm just going to.
I believe the ordinance say, "If you are away from the public parking lot otherwise, I believe that's what's yours." If you far away, like, they're not far away over there, so.
Most people aren't in 600 feet.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm glad you're familiar with, yeah, because I think the specification was 600 feet or something, but from this proposed site where someone might foot that building, that building is within, they would not have to provide parking because they're close enough to that one, and they're even closer to the one by the old PNC Bank, so the regulation is still going to hurt us seriously. Anyway, I just wanted to give this, you can look. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. All right. On with our regular business. Motion to approve the November 11, 2019 regular meeting in November 19, 2019 budget workshop meeting minutes. So, Bruce, Sek, and Nino. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the December 2019 bill. I'll move Joe Posmo. Joe Posmo, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the December 13, 20.7, and 2019, oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the December 13, 20.7, 2019, and January 3, 2020. Bruce, Sek, and Nino, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adopt ordinance number 1012, Bridgeville Borough Mending Ordinance Number 1005 pertaining to general rates charged for sewer services given to the customers of the Alagany County Sanitary Authority within the borough. 2019 rates, office sand rate of $7.92 per 1,000 gallons of water used. The borough rate was $6.23 per 1,000 gallons of water used. The office sand service charge was $16.69 per quart. The 2020 rates, office sand rate will be $8.50 per 1,000 gallons of water used. The borough rate will be $6.73 per 1,000 gallons of water used, and the office sand service charge will be $17.86 per quart. I believe this reflects the expense for the way gallons increase. The ordinance has, these ordinance have been publicly advertised in a public hearing Wednesday, September 9, 2019, to receive public comment. So, Will Anderson.
I'm Sek.
And Nino, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adopt ordinance number 1013 of Bridgeville Borough fixing the tax rate, levying borough taxes for fiscal year 2020, and reenacting all other revenue caps. No increase in the borough real free taxes proposed. The ordinance has eventually been out of touch. Joe and Virginia, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Before we get to the next motion, Joe Posmo from our finance committee, let's go over our 2020 proposal.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank Lori and the committee for sitting down and spending a lot of time and talking about a lot of different things, trying to think out of the box as well as trying to also help the borough in not raising taxes. We do, we did put together a few slides just to talk about a few things. Obviously, the duties of the borough are to administer and handle finances, support the police and the fire department, the emergency management, of course, engineering and planning, sanitary sewers, stormwater management upgrades, and road paving. In addition, we do have the other things like parks and recreation, the public works handling, things around town with the snow plowing and other incident jobs, very important to the borough, making sure everything is followed by the code enforcement, support the library and recycling and waste collection, so a lot of different things involved in the borough. Some of the accomplishments that we had this year, completed the plans for the McLaughlin Run Hazard Mitigation Project. The hazard mitigation, as you saw, we received $425,000 from Representative Ortizte and Senator Avina. In addition, we also earned $100,000 for the Byron Hills Thorium Sewer Upgrade, which we really, really wanted to do. In addition, the offices here needed camera systems and updated computer hardware to make sure we're up in the part for security and all of those things that are involved with making sure where everything is secure here at the offices. We also did some installation of cameras on Byron Hill Road that was supported by grants through the DA's office. We also did restroom upgrades, much needed to Chargers Park and as well as McLaughlin. And we did submit grant applications to FEMA for seven single homes and two apartment buildings through their program that's going to total approximately $987,000. Let's see, we implemented the, what's the HHW?
Household Waste.
Thank you. Household Waste, e-waste collection events for the residents here, which saved us a significant amount of money for the borough, but we also had one to make sure that we had that available for our residents. We completed plans for the Maple Commercial and Warner Avenue retaining wall projects, which will be planned on hopefully starting this year. The MS4 stormwater compliance work is ongoing. How many more years is that ongoing? That's forever. The pavement maintenance program, we did Elizabeth Street and a section of Chest Street. We talked before, we also had to delay one section that would be used as soon as the weather turns, so we could stay compliant with the requirements that we have with that. We completed Phase One and started Phase Two on the backflow preventers, and then we had another adaptive signals project of Washington Station and Washington Byron Hill. So, as you can see, many, many things that were done and a lot of planning for this year to be able to do a lot of things in the year coming. As we've talked about, the Greenlight Go Program, and very, very soon, Short Tier Street and Bridge Project that's set for 2020, but there were rumors that it might be extended maybe six months or something. Yeah, but that's something that's coming. Of course, with public safety with the police department, they had over 3,300 calls through November, and the fire department also had almost 1,500 calls, or I'm sorry, 1,500 hours of training, and had over 400 calls through November. So, public safety was definitely very busy this past year. 2018 destructive flooding, you would think that we were done with all of those expenses, yet in 2019, we added another $133,000 that we had to write checks for, for things that had to do with that destructive flood. So, those expenses have gone, and we have some plans with that. Some of the large expenses that we have in 2019 that we'd like to do is the MS4 projects continue on, the sanitary sewer project, the Phase One, I'm sorry, these were for this year, excuse me, the Phase One backflow prevention. We also had insurance liability coverages of over $100,000, and unfortunately, you know, insurances for that as well as health insurance and workers' compensation as well. Flood mitigation, the adaptive lane project, and the street alley repair. So, those were all of our large expenses that we had that was $928,000. Now, the good part is we were able to keep that as low as we could with the, trying to create some reserve to be able to put a large number of multiple related projects in place that's coming here. So, some of those things are the mitigation projects that we have in McLaughlin Park, retaining walls that we talked about earlier, and then sediment layer removal. Again, the MS4 stormwater management continues, the lining project, of course, some of the other things we're required to do, sanitary sewer lining, the camery, cameraing network, and repairs. Finish Phase Two of the backflow preventers and start the plan for Phase Three. Continue with the maintenance program on the pavement. Phase Two, the McLaughlin Park upgrades, we have to have that done by the end of this coming year. Again, the Byron Hill Road Stormwater Project that Jason was talking about with that check. And then, we also will be knocking down the building that we own that's right next door. We're hoping to have that done by the end of the year. Is that still the case?
By the end, yes.
By the end of the year. So, in addition, we'd like to put a parking lot there, and this is something actually, I think, was brought up last month, but we've been talking about it for three or four months, was putting some type of communication or sign up near the borough to have some communication in that way as well. Other expenses that we're anticipating, you know, all of those things that I've just mentioned, that's going to cost around $2.7 million. So, when we're looking back to some of those things, where are we going to get the money? Looking at revenues for the last, what is that, four years, we've done very well bringing in the income. One of the comments I was going to make on the Treasury report is that as of November, we've already collected our taxes to budget where we expect it to be, I think, through the end of the year. Yeah, sorry. So, anything else that we collect, hopefully it will be more, would help aside in the long run as well. But we're anticipating with some of those different things that were actually going down in, or about the same, or your plan on being about the same, correct? With the budget. And then expenditures, we actually went down in expenditures of what we were anticipating, which those monies now, because we already run some tight ship here and we're anticipating approximately $400,000 that we'll have left over from this year to be able to put towards these projects as well as cover a lot of the money over the last few years. How much was the total? Over $600,000? Over $600,000 that we wrote in expenses over the last 18 months to get them back up where they need to be. So, our general fund balance, which, if I remember our conversations, is kind of one of the lowest points we were last year.
Last year.
Last year was the lowest point ever.
Since I've been here, yes.
So, we're starting to get that money, and now it's going to prepare us to be able to do the projects that we want to do. So, as you can see, when we're talking the $2.7 million, how are we going to do some of those things? So, in the finance committee, what we have talked about is we do not want to raise taxes. We don't feel it's necessary. We have discussed a few other alternatives we're considering. Because interest rates are so low, this borough, and I deal with a lot of municipalities in my professional career, this borough does not have one set of debt. We're considering possibly taking a loan because we don't want to prolong all of these projects for the next five years. We'd like to get moving on them and get them addressed and not run into another flood that we've run into of an issue. We'd like to start working on these different things. So, we do have a balanced budget of $3.2 million. How does that affect the property owners? We are not changing the village, so it's just a reminder, there are two sets, there's two instances of the tax on the property. There's the building assessment, which is at six and a half mils, and the land assessment's at 10 mils. Therefore, if your assessment is $100,000 and broken into that illustration there, then your taxes would be calculated in that way. Again, no property tax increase is proposed. Now, what does that mean for residents of Bridgeville? If you own your home and you're able to file the homestead exemption, we will give you a $12,000 credit, which reduces the amount of the building assessment discount. And in this example, on a $100,000 property, as long as you have the homestead exemption, it'll be a $78 credit back towards your taxes on your amount. So, if, one suggestion, if you are a resident and it is your home, make sure that on the Alagany County website that you're listed as, that you have the homestead exemption. In addition to the borough, you also get it for the county too. So, definitely look back and make sure, just Alagany County assessment, and make sure that your property, if you live there, is you're qualified for the homestead exemption. So, in summary, the borough continues to plan for the mitigation products, projects in 2020 after the floods in 18. Mitigation costs this year, just below $133,000 plus, in 2020 will be earmarked to continue with essential services to the residents while looking to the construction of the mitigation projects in flood pain areas. The projects are going to cost approximately $895,000. The Washington Avenue Bridge Widing Plan is supposed to be construction in 2020. We're crossing our fingers, but there are rumors that it may get postponed three to six months. But we also want to move forward with the McLaughlin Park upgrades as well as the Byron Hill Road Sewer Project. Cash reserves are, as planned, have experienced an increase of about $350,000 with a modest approach in tightening in 2019, which is why we are increasing taxes. The finance committee and Lori, we're considering proposing that we consider a capital improvement loan of approximately $1.1 million, which was proposed in the budget in order to take care, or take advantage of the low interest rates and complete these essential projects instead of taking bits and pieces over the next two to, well, three to five years. We'd like to try to do as many as we can ASAP to be able to address some of these issues that just continue to go on and on. Council, any questions?
Good God. Any administration?
Yeah, I want to thank Lori. She, she does all the number crunching. She's the nutty, kind of makes it easy for us at the meeting, and then we have more conversations of what we can do. So, I'm excited. This year is going to be great. We're looking forward to it, and hopefully it'll be a win.
Yes, Paul.
I was going to say, on the McLaughlin flood mitigation thing, what does that include? Are we still going to be able to put up those debris?
That's part of it.
There's five, there's five different areas, I believe.
Yeah.
There was a couple of wall issues.
Well, the grant that we got, that we received from Representative Ortizte and Senator Avina will cover the lowering of the wall fill and the trash rack. And then, we're also applying for more monies to do all the retaining walls that we need to do, including one over at Warner Avenue.
Is that, I just remember, I may come out to the other, I remember when Bridgeville tried putting in those vertical columns to keep, to stop the debris.
We got to do it.
Is that okay?
The applications are into the DDP for that.
It's a different design. That design was not permitted.
That's, as we mentioned, again, the debris is an important part of the segment of the summers, you know, from the water.
With that said, there's a motion to adopt resolution number 2019-15 for Bridgeville rescuing the budget for fiscal year 2020 and adopting the same. Budget workshop meeting was held on November 19, 2019, with the proposed budget available for public review beginning November 25, 2019, meeting the 10-day requirement for the borough code.
Sek.
And Nino, all those in favor?
Okay.
All those opposed?
My next question, is this include the loan for $1.1 million? Is that what we're?
Well, no worries.
Okay, okay, this is just the right, okay, thank you. I'll say hi.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adopt resolution number 2019-16 of Bridgeville Borough to ratify action taking, authorizing, and directing the council president to sign an agreement. taken, authorizing and directing the council president to sign an agreement on his behalf of PENDOT for abbreviated corporate utility work and the borough manager to authorize and direct to assist the same. Uh, this is for storm sewer utility work pertaining to the state Route 50 and Charters Street Winding project. So, Joe Cosmo?
Second.
And Nina, all those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adopt resolution number 2019-17 requesting a grant through the Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Program in the amount of $425,000 from the Commonwealth Finance Authority to be used for the Bridgeville Borough flood reduction plan implementation and designated Michael Palmer, Borough Council President, and Lori Collins, Borough Manager, and the officials to execute all documents, agreements between the Borough of Bridgeville and the Commonwealth, Commonwealth Finance Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. Bruce?
So, round me, second.
And Nina, all those in favor?
Okay.
All those opposed? Motion carries. A motion to exonerate the, uh, Bridgeville Borough Real Estate Tax Collector, Anne Marie, Anne Marie Greasy for uncollected real estate taxes for the calendar year 2016. Uh, the uncollected total is $12,164 in savings. So, Joe, Greasy and Richard Schneider, all those in favors?
Right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. A motion to average ties and approve the meeting dates for calendar year 2020. Bridgeville Borough Council agenda meeting will be held at 6:30 PM. Council meetings will begin at 7:00 PM and will be held the second Monday of each month except January, when it will be held January 6th, 2020. The budget workshop, uh, will be held Tuesday, November 17th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Bridgeville Park Authority will meet the third Monday of each month at 7:30 PM. Planning Commission will meet the last Monday of each month at 7:30 PM during the months of January through April and June through October. The main meeting, the main meeting will be held Wednesday, May 19th, 2020. November and December meetings will be provided and held December 7th, 2020. Zoning period will be scheduled as immediately. Bruce?
Second.
Henderson, all those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, motion to accept any pay, to accept and pay any commissions due to the November 2019 real estate tax collector report. So, oh, good time. Nina and Bruce, all those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the October 2019 treasurer's report.
All move.
Uh, Joe Greasy?
Second.
And Bruce, all those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, motion to accept the November 2019 police report.
So.
Bill Henderson? And Richard Schneider, all those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And a motion to accept the December 2019 government report. So, move. Henderson?
Second.
And Joe Cosmo, all those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, community reports.
Bruce? The only thing I have is to thank Lori for all the work she's been doing to that. So that's starting to be back on the map, back in the back of us. Make sure everybody merry Christmas and happy new year.
Finance?
I think I've said enough, but I was excited to see that, uh, the outstanding, uh, real estate taxes that we had due, uh, over half of it came in in November. So, uh, excited to see those numbers and just a reminder to those that pay on a quarterly basis that, uh, you have the month prior to penalties.
Okay. Uh, Parks and Recreation, no questions?
Uh, nothing on Parks, president, but on the CAG note, uh, the CAG meeting this month is being held at Bridgeville, coming from Fire Hall, September 19th. Uh, council staff are all invited to there. Uh, North, they have a grab bag gift if you want to participate. It's a $25 limit. If you bring one, you take one, but anybody interested, you're more than welcome. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, Public Works, Nina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, if there's snow, we rain.
There you go.
But I think you're welcome. Anyway, the leaves, it's continued to be picked up, so quite a.
When's that done, by the way?
The time.
You know where they stop doing it?
Well, there's been many, many leaves that I've been thinking.
Probably the end of the week.
Yeah. We, uh, we don't have to actually stop and let them receive them. I'll just call the, uh, the people to pick it up. Clean up, there's empty, fresh, uh, fresh, uh, runs down, clean bridges, cliff branches, cut tree parts, weatherized park, you know, they're closed, right? Uh, remove, will tear banners, and for holidays. By the way, the, uh, it'd be some, uh, repair, vehicle repair, quite a bit of that. Uh, the, uh, the park, the, uh, it looks beautiful. It's a good job, Public Works, they did a hell of a good job, as usual. Yes, it looks beautiful. And other than that, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Nina.
Uh, so then there are Cox's Glories, open people who are going to walk around Cox's Glory, and also Triangle's always, uh, McGlocklin and Charters, pretty much.
Although I did see the Charters Valley Boys Basketball Team had their pictures taken at McGlocklin.
Really?
Yeah. It's like, yeah, they're photo shoot. All right, uh, Public Safety, Bill Henderson?
Mike, I got nothing to add for Public Safety, but if you don't mind, I'd like to thank Mike for his contributions to our community and his commitment to make Bridgeville a better place to live and visit. He's left this council better than what it was when he got here.
Thank you.
I'm lucky. I did find my spot. And that's a tribute, Mike, to your energy and your dedication. I know you more than most out there, and I know you care deeply about Bridgeville. I urge you to find your place to continue helping us improve our town. You have much to offer, and we're better placed with you involved. It's a bet.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Uh, Santa Mary's?
I attended the ribbon cutting ceremony at Charters Valley High School. It was very interesting, the principal took us on tour, some of us on tour of the building. The industry lands were of the most interest to us. It's turned out to be a really big campus now, and you should visit if you're in the opportunity. Also, our borough tree this year is representative at the library, special trees with pictures of various businesses and homes throughout the borough. So please stop at the library to see there. And I pray that all of you will have a blessed holiday season, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and God bless us all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Penny. Please Chief Chad?
Thanks, Council President. Uh, I just want to start off by saying I concur with Councilman Anderson's rendition of what he just gave and agree with him 100%. It's a pleasure working with you over the years. We have some community organized, community projects coming up starting this Friday. I'll be participating the second year in a row with the shopping and cop program and local Walmart with the surrounding departments, Call Your Township and Scott Township, where we could take children with special needs through the store and, uh, pick out gifts for them with members of the Charters Valley School District. Also, once again, we have the Buddy the Elf adventure scheduled for this year. The Buddy the Elf, the Buddy the Elf adventure will be on Sunday, December 22nd, probably around 11 o'clock.
Yeah.
Depending when he gets here.
Yes.
I don't know what kind of entrance he's going to make this year. It's hard to tell. So, uh, following whatever Buddy gets into, we meet once again at the Dairy Light Parking Lot with the fire department, and, uh, we should have several gifts that we're able to pass out to any child that shows up. So spread the word. Uh, we like to put it out there, you don't have to be from Bridgeville, you can come anywhere. Uh, we have generous toy donations coming once again from the Pittsburgh area Toys for Tites and from the Western Pennsylvania Athletic Leagues, stuff the store program. So along with that, probably next week, one day, I'll take some time and actually deliver toys to the, the kids in the local daycare once again also. So, um, that's all I have.
Um, before we go to Swisher, just want to congratulate Chad for being engaged, asking the questions. Congratulations. It sounds like it's going to be a big event.
Never has it.
Never has it. All right, uh, Swisher?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, my red report, I'd like to join Bruce and make a couple and wishing everybody the best wishes for the Christmas season, holiday season. I'd like to join Mr. Henderson and the Chiefs. Sadly, it's a great approach and order, it's been missed up here in the, so, thanks.
Paul, I had, uh, one question, or actually two.
Sure.
Can I, uh, you, it, last month, we had asked you to provide a formal opinion on that issue, on an issue, what's the time for that one?
Thank you.
Is that next month?
Yeah.
And then, uh, just as a request, on, on your report, would you be able to provide that to us three days prior so we can review and then?
Sure. Thank you. First year?
Yes. I've stopped it on the view of the projects, there are quite a few pending. Uh, we have split the 22 grants, obviously, this evening, and we've seen confirmation of two of them. Uh, 2020 Road Program, uh, we plan on meeting with the street committee, uh, January, February, whatever works for me, noon. Get that out a bit for March, probably late March, take action on it during April meeting. 2019 Roads, uh, project, uh, was delayed due to the weather. The contractor wanted to move in, uh, about seven to eight. Uh, that's when the weather turned bad and the water looked like fuels. And, um, they really had to have days that were above 40 degrees consistently. Uh, that was a bigger risk, since that was the coolest funded, funded project. So we did recommend that we delay it until next year. She won't think that. 2015 Roads, there's a complaint, um, out there. All did notify the funding company. We have received a response from the Ralston, and we're going to schedule a meeting with them. I don't think they're going to do any of the repairs, but we're going to go through the motions at least to see if we can get them to, uh, at least pass them. Uh, they have some pretty good documentation they provided on the work that was completed, that they made the specifications. So we'll run through that process with them. Right now, I don't have it on, and I personally think that we'd be successful in getting that work fixed. If not, then as part of our 2020 program, we'll talk about how to do some repairs for that area. Uh, next is the Public Works projects. Uh, the ones that were on the grant, uh, funding, uh, was Janeway, the commercial street calvert cleaning, uh, channel cleaning, uh, lowering of the ball field and the trash rack. Janeway ramp permit has been issued on that under revised plans. The, um, calvert cleaning, um, we're going to be, um, addressing, uh, D E P on that. They had questions throughout, but we do believe that permit's going to be able to be issued. Maple Street Ball permit has been issued. We're meeting with Gateway, uh, next week, currently. We're going to review the, uh, trash rack in McGlocklin Run, and then we're going to be the ones to address those comments moving forward. Um, we did receive the onshore model about two months ago. Uh, we do have that in the system now. We have updated it with all these projects, including the flood mitigation and the trash rack. A lot of work session at some point, um, with the group to run through what that model shows and what each one of these improvements do or don't do. Um, we're also looking at the, the wall on the side of Borough Building that runs from the, uh, ice cream shop down. Um, we're actually picking up some more surveys because after we picked up the first piece, um, it looks like the wall should be extended all the way down and actually tie into the railroad and bang. Um, it's not very high. It'd be surprising when you look at the model, um, that it's going to be four foot maybe. Um, and it looks like we should do some stream improvements to give more volume, um, because what happens is from the channel, water backs up. Uh, of course, I mean, everybody here probably sees that. Um, so we need to make sure what that elevation, uh, needs to be, uh, as part of long-term solution, maybe, um, some pumps on the bottom part of town that we'd actually lift the water in over top of. Um, it's considered to be a levee, definitely. You know, from a low area in town, uh, we pump the water out from the Borough Building area and pump it up over. You have to have redundant pumps, which is system or screw pumps that move a lot of volume of water quickly. But it's something that there is projects once you have the levee designed. The CFA program that we just submitted for, they have a flood mitigation one for levees. You have to have the study done first, prove that it, uh, will work, and then you can submit for actual long-term grant funding for that project. But just looking at the, uh, early findings, uh, it is a project where you can be successful in, um, limiting the amount of flooding you ever see on the bottom part of town once you build a levee. But you have to put the pumps in. Once you build a levee, the water can't get out, you got to lift it.
Where's it go?
Yeah, thank you. That's what.
As it goes through town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The court office has a similar system. My court office has a levee on the outside town, which was in the seventies, and there's screw pumps that lift some water from the storm system up and over into, if not the bottom part of town to flood for the last 30 years. And that has, that has been successful. So that one segment, uh, I think is what we're looking at. Um, the upper parts of town, uh, we're just now starting to look at some different solutions through there, including the properties that is on the $975,000. What, what we can do with those properties to help the situation through that part. It's very conservative through there, you know, it's very careful. Um, so we have to look at how to make that better than it is today. Um, we also have an option that we're looking at, taking a pipe clean of the channel from the park.
Okay.
That was underneath all the homes with one.
Coming back here.
In, gotcha. Uh, so we're going to have that, that birdie to show what that looks like, see what that cost looks like, uh, to be considered. Uh, the Kanning Wall projects were submitted, none of those were funded. That was Maple Street, Warner, and, um, the wall that we just talked about, the other calvert. But I do think there is going to be some opportunities there to apply for other funding for those in the future, so. Uh, tonight, you did, uh, pass a resolution, uh, for the PRP plan. Uh, that was $425,000. You have four storm sectors, um, that are stuck on your MS4 program. They're about $80,000, $90,000, somewhere in there. Um, the other part of that's for street sweeper. You know, street sweeper, but for your MS4 program, one of the items you had was a street slash vacuum. They're very expensive. Um, they're $300 plus or minus $1,000. Uh, your program is you're going to sweep 26 times a year each street in the borough, um, is what was included with last year, 2018, submitted. And you have to clean out your catch bases, so that piece of equipment will be built. So that's part of that grant. At some point, um, we won't concede there's other grants out there for that same piece. If you don't get funding for this, because you may only get partial funding, so we want to keep our eye out for, uh, a grant that can buy a piece of equipment, uh, for the Public Works, uh, street sweeping. It's a special kind. It's not just an eligibility that goes around sweeping. It has to have a vacuum on it, and you have to get a certain amount of particulate that takes up, so. Does that mean we wouldn't have to use the common word?
No.
Or is that just different? Yeah, that's the vacuum. The other thing with the MS4 program, whenever you clean out the catch bases moving forward, we have to weigh that material, so we're going to work over winter here with protocol on how to do that, because you're going to get credit for catch base cleaning, because it's weight. Uh, that's in the permit invasion, so. Um, that's a little onerous. We're going to work where you don't have to do some of the others that's in there, but we'll get you through this permanent cycle and then the next one, yeah, and do some other suggestions, so. CDPT, um, the restroom project, they're down to the doors, and a little bit of lighting. I think they got the lighting done. Um, and the backflow matters. We did start, we got five completed. Um, next month, they should have a pay request from them. We have some pictures of what they have done, completed. We'll also have pictures of the restroom project. It doesn't heat in in the spring when it pours, um, so we, when we have our meeting with Public Works, we should talk about sequence in that, so that when it opens in the spring, it's, um, we need some good weather so that they can finish up the painting and so on.